The board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cruzen, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cruzen, eighteen present.
Quorum being present, unless everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, Mike Grady from the Plumbers and Pipe Fritters, Jeff Abusi from the Building Trades. I have Janet Denoyer and Greg Meyer, the President of Lindenwood Neighbor Association, and the President of Tillis Neighbor Association here with me. If you guys want to stand or something, so, welcome. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Mrs. Rachel Smith for the Circuit Attorney's Office, and also Veris Jones, former comptroller, resident twenty-sixth ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're out. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Ms. Shirley Robinson-Merran from Harris Stowe State University, and Reverend Oscar Brown, Jr., of the Churches of God in Christ. And my very special guest is Romi from the License Collector Office.
All right, welcome. Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Anthony Lancia with the AGC, Gina Hackenworth with Ameren, but I'd also like to point out Beth Seiright, who is a Sixteenth Ward resident, and she will be representing the Comptroller Darlene Green's office from now on down at the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, my frat brother and friend, Steve Roberts, Jr., and I think that he's a resident of the Twenty-Sixth Ward.
All right, welcome. Welcome, Steve. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest, Mr. Alfred Demetrius from Firefighters Local Seventy-three, and also I'd like to acknowledge Beth Seiright also. She's been here the last three weeks. And I'd also like to acknowledge Steve Hill, the City Marshal, who used to work for me at one time. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Approval of the minutes. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Would I move for, what is that?
Approval of October sixteenth.
October sixteenth minutes.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
We've dispensed with line items seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We've dispensed with line items nine through ten, first reading board bills.
Board Bill Two-O-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and ordinance authorized and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of any consideration of sum of $3,000 and other good and valuable consideration. A quick claim deed to remind releasing forever quick claim unto Vicki Place Incorporated, certain city-owned property located in City Block 1260, which property is known by address 2805 Hickory Street. Board Bill Two-Ten, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance dissolving special allocation fund for the chemical building redevelopment area, terminating the designation of certain respective portion of the city relating to a redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Eleven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance dissolving special allocation fund for the Jefferson Arms redevelopment area and terminating the designation of certain respective portion of the city relating to a redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Twelve, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plan listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill Two-Thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as 4494 Lindell Redevelopment Area pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment area, establishing 4494 Lindell Plate, Lindell Special Allocation Fund and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan redevelopment area, redevelopment project, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Lindell Development Incorporated, designating Lindell Development Incorporated as developer of the redevelopment area, authorizing other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property within the redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $1,500,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for 4494 Lindell Redevelopment Project and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as 32 North Euclid Redevelopment Area pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act approving a redevelopment plan redevelopment project adopting a tax increment financing within the redevelopment area, establishing 32 North Euclid Special Allocation Fund and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan redevelopment area and a redevelopment project, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and North Euclid Developer prescribing the form and details of said agreement, designating North Euclid Developer Incorporated as developer of the redevelopment area, authorizing other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property within the redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $4,500,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for 32 North Euclid Redevelopment Project, prescribing the form and details of such notes and covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and project the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard and Alderman Coulter and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of St. Louis Riverfront Stadium Project financing, construction, and lease agreement by and among the City of St. Louis and Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority in the state of Missouri pertaining to the design, construction, financing, leasing of new professional sports facility designed to host professional football and other sporting recreational entertainment events and issuance of a provision for repayment of bonds issued by the authority to finance the facility, authorizing the planning, design, construction of certain public works or improvement projects, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into and execute said financing agreement, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Twenty, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to submit all necessary applications and to enter into agreement with the Department of Justice for the city, Department of Health, Burn, Criminal Justice Innovation Programs, funding for a near-north side project, BCJL implementation, authorizing the mayor upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment to expend any funds received by said grant to fulfill the obligations of the grant and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Twenty-One, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to submit all necessary applications to enter into agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for the city, Department of Health, Public Service, Department of Health, Public Health Emergency Preparedness, Ebola, LPHA funding, and authorizing the mayor upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment to expend any funds received by said grants to fulfill the obligation of the grants and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Two-O-Nine, to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bills Two-Twenty and Two-Twenty-One, and to the Housing Committee, Board Bills Two-Ten to Eleven to Twelve to Thirteen, Two-Fourteen to Fifteen to Sixteen to Seventeen and Two-Eighteen. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill One-Ninety-four, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works and improvement program at Lambert Airport entitled Fiscal Year 2016 Project Equipment List and at a total estimated cost of $25 million and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Nine-Five, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing public works improvement program for the emergency building and environs project at Lambert Airport and total estimated cost of $400,000, authorizing an initial appropriation in a total amount of $400,000 and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Nine-Six, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer in an amount not to exceed $400,000 of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Development Fund in amount not to exceed $400,000 and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Nine-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Lease Agreement AL-002 between the city and Trico Properties and Investments, granting to the let's see certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of the premises containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Nine-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a Lambert Airport Electronics Retail Concession Agreement, AL-214, between the city and HG St. Louis JVLL, granting to the concessionaire the non-exclusive right and privilege to operate and manage an electronics retail concession at the airport and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Nine-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Space Permit AL-371 between the city and Outfront Media, granting to the permitee certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of the premises containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Following Board Bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Two-O-Three, sponsored by Alderman Carter and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission and authorizing and directing the city acting through the Treasury to issue Parking Revenue Bond Series 2015B for tax abate and tax abatement in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $48 million, setting forth certain terms and conditions relating to such bonds, appointing a trustee, bond registrar, and paying agent in connection with the bonds, approving and authorizing the execution of a supplemental trust indenture number five, an escrow agreement, and continuing disclosure agreement, and a tax compliance agreement, authorizing the negotiated sale of bonds and execution of the delivery of a bond purchase agreement and containing a severability clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill Two-O-Four, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, Behringer, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Ortman, and Alderman Boyd, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Human Services by and through St. Louis Area Agency on Aging to accept a grant from SSM Health Business in the amount of $49,000 over the next three fiscal years and to expend those funds for the city home, E-home project as set forth in the grant award agreement attached here to Exhibit A. Appropriating such funds and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment to expend such funds as permitted by the grant award agreement and containing an emergency clause. Following Board Bill was reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill One-A-Three, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and Alderman Hubbard and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission approving the renaming of the entire length of an existing public street from North Third Street to Lumiere Place Boulevard, extending between O'Fallon Street on the north to Washington Avenue on the south. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Public Employees Committee, Board Bill Two-O-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Ortman, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Circuit Attorney to enter into a contract with the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Program for funding to create a crime analysis-based diversion project within the office of the Circuit Attorney, also referred to as the Redirect Program, and authorizing the Circuit Attorney to expend the contract grant funds necessary to support this.
Have some order.
Funds necessary to support this effort, including the hiring of personnel and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
We've dispensed with line item fourteen. There's been a request to move Board Bill Number One-Seventy-nine from the perfection consent calendar to the regular perfection calendar. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Board, perfection consent count.
Board Bill One-O-Nine, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Coulter, Alderman Spencer, Cruzen, and Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission pertaining to the regulation of home occupations in the zoning code, amending ordinance 59979, section pertaining to permitted home occupations containing a severability clause. Board Bill One-Nine-Two, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance pertaining to the employees' retirement system of the city, repealing the following subsection two and three, Section eleven of ordinance 66511, subsection five, Section fourteen of ordinance 66511, and Sections four and twelve of ordinance 67963, and enacting new provisions relating to the same subject matter and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
To the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We would dispense with line item sixteen, well, no, line item sixteen, Board Bill Number One-Seventy-nine.
Board Bill One-Seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor to submit the 2016 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Federal Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS entitlement programs, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into and execute agreement with HUD for the receipt of 2016 CDBG home ESG and HOPWA funds appropriating the sum of $16,650,204, which the city estimates will be available for the 2016 CDBG program year, appropriating the sum of $2,100,000, which the city estimates will be available for the 2016 home program year, appropriating the sum of $1,504,937, which the city estimates will be available for the 2016 ESG program year and appropriating the sum of $1,403,962, which the city estimates will be available for the 2016 HOPWA program year and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number One-Seventy-nine.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill One-Seventy-nine.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? Alderman from the first, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I don't rise in opposition of us receiving block grant money. I rise in opposition of the way this money is being spent, the way it's been spent for a lot of years. And I especially rise in opposition to the allocation of the money that's being spent on personnel over there. I think that we ought to start to allocate the personnel budget attached to the project because then we would see those personnels over there are not spending their time fairly on all parts of the city. They're spending their time on certain little projects in the city, but they're making it look like that they're helping us all. They're not doing that. I'm looking at that we're getting $16 million, $17 million, I don't know, the total. Let's say 20 million. $4,67,458 is going to the Housing, Production, Community Development Administration. $4 million. Another million dollars is going to administration someplace else. You know, fully, one-fourth to one-third of this budget is administration. We can't do bricks and mortar when we're paying all these people. It is ridiculous to me. They're not doing anything in my part of the city. And so I don't see why that should be chalked up as we're doing a good job with the block grant money and we're doing a fair job because it's talked about this fairness in here. It is not fair. So I've been mapping how the block grant money has been spent since the 1990s. And so I actually have the maps, so I've been updating them now. The block grant money is not spent fairly. And it's an easy thing to look at when you look at the map. It's a painful thing to look at when you look at the map. It's unfair. Not going to spend much time. But I cannot support this kind of money being spent on personnel. We used to get a lot more money. We don't. If you tell everybody else to get mean and lean, get mean and lean over there at CDNSLDC, you know. We got, what else we got over in here? We have $500,000 for the commercial district incentive and another $500,000 for the program managers. Get rid of mine. I don't need mine. Get rid of it. I would prefer mine to go to bricks and mortars. So the one you assigned to me, goodbye. I don't, I don't need it. So I don't need all that personnel doing nothing over in my community, okay? They got little pet things where they call me up. Oh, we want the business of the year for the mayor's business luncheon. That's a promotion for the mayor. You don't want the business of the year. You want something to promote the mayor. That's not what block grant money is about. That's not what it's supposed to be about, okay? Or you run around, it used to be the Aldermen had some input about what, who should get facade. I come back down here and now that's all gone. You don't get to say who gets facade. So the people that my person is picking is somebody that I'm getting given tax abatement to, all kinds of things. But when I look to see who they donated their money to, it doesn't have anything to do with if they're a good business. He's sending me a notice about, well, he has some zoning problems. He does have zoning problems. His zoning problem is that I started him back in the 90s and I put some restrictions on if he could put signage and stuff up. And so he broke it for all these years when I was gone. And when I came back, I made him adhere to it. But they want to give him some facade money. For what? For breaking the law? That's politics. We're using block grant money for politics and to hire our friends and to give jobs. And we're using too much money from block grant money to pay personnel. It is totally ridiculous, okay? If we got this little money, then we ought to have reduction in the personnel over there. We need to be comparing the budget, the monies that we used to have 10, 15, 20 years ago. And then look at the personnel. How can we spend a third of our money, a fourth of our money for personnel? It's supposed to be able to build up things, to build up communities. There's certain communities that get $50,000 here and then they want to promote that, oh, well, we can't do anything over there. Yes, you can. You can do it because you don't put the money over there. You build up certain parts, downtown, central quarters, and the wards that touch downtown and central quarters. And then the wards, as you get further north out, you get little and nothing. But when you look at the application of block grants, and you've been looking at the applications of block grants for years and years and years, that's not what our application looks like. It's the exact opposite. If the city was, and in fact, we have had 15 instances where we have had to give money back because we misspent money. The Chase Park Plaza comes to mind with me because I was here the last time. They took the money and pretended like it was going to be something else. And then when they finished the money, they used it. They said, oh, we're not going to do that. And they just paid the money back. There should have been criminal charges then on that. They shouldn't have been able to use that money that was supposed to be someplace else and then pay it back like that. There've been many other instances. I'm not on HUD anymore, but when I was in it, on HUD for the two years, just an eye-opener of things that go on. And I told them last year, a year before, that I was not going to support block grant anymore with all this heavy personnel administration. Sorry, we don't have that kind of money and it should not be coming out of block grant. And most certainly, it should not be coming out of block grant as though you're doing something to the whole city. So when you submit these budgets, you should say, oh, we worked on this in the central quarter. We worked on this in downtown. So that we can see how little of the personnel budget actually goes to North St. Louis because it's not going to North St. Louis. And I'm not going to support it. This is a horrible budget. It is not fair. I've been talking to HUD for the last year about the unfairness of it and I've been requesting things. And as I said, maps are the easiest way. You cannot change the lie of a map. Where have the projects gone? The thing which you can do is change the narrative to say, well, we can't get anything there. When I got elected in 91, people told me, we had no grocery stores. Oh, we can't put a grocery store in North St. Louis. Oh, we can't have a Walgreens. Sure, we could. Just had to have somebody pushing it and believing in it and working on it. You also had to have some assistance for block grant money. So it's not what we can't do, it's what we won't do and we don't do. And we put a false narrative behind it as though North St. Louis doesn't exist. And we spend a lot of money. We talk all about we were going to get rid of these people who have had gotten money from block grant money, all these little neighborhood housing corporations and things like that because they're paying all that personnel. When I had mine. When I had mine, it was all volunteer, nobody got paid. We did all kind of housing and stuff with volunteer staff. We had people in our communities who were trained to do it, so we had contractors, we had people who were developers, we had real estate people and they, and I raised them $500,000 for their mailing and stuff and they never got paid and they made it, uh, a profit on all of the things that they did and they put it back into the money to do bricks and mortar. You gotta do bricks and mortar, not pay all this personnel. And for that reason, I am opposed to this budget as it's submitted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 17th you recognize to close.
Uh, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number 179 as their request for roll call. All in favors? It's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Ingrassia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Varmer. Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Cruzen.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Varmer. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I missed you. 19, aye votes, 3, no votes, 1 abstain.
By a vote, stay in the motion Alderman from the 17th and perfected Board Bill Number 179.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 76, 141, 184 and 185.
Alderman from the 18th you recognize on the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Ingrassia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Varmer. Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman, Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Varmer. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Ogilvy. 22, aye votes, 1, no vote.
By your vote, stay in the motion of Alderman from the 18th and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. On dispensable line item 18, report of enrollment.
Board Bills 76, 141, 184 and 185.
All other business being suspended, President sell an open session of fixing signature here to to the end that these may become law. second by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 128 sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the 2016 Washington Place Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from 28th you recognize on the first reading of resolution 128.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, uh, request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, I move for the adoption of the Westminster, or the Washington Place Special Business District for 2016.
It's been moved by Alderman from 28th, second by Alderman from the 9th. Alderman, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 128. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 129 sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the 2016 Westminster Lake Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from 28th you recognize on first reading of resolution number 129.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, I move for the adoption of resolution 129 for the 2016 Westminster Lake Special Business District Budget.
Been moved by Alderman from 28th, second by Alderman from 13th. Alderman from 28th, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 129. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
With dispensable line item 22, Miss Lane, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Monday Personnel Committee Meeting at 9:30 a.m. in the leisure room and the, uh, Personnel Closed Meeting. Wednesday Housing Meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday Housing Meeting 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday Full Board Meeting 10 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President and Members of the Board. Tomorrow's my birthday, trick or treat.
Oh, man. Happy birthday.
Also, can I get a round of applause for my birthday? My God. Just because I vote no, y'all just think I'm a villain, no. The Church of God in Christ is coming to St. Louis for a healing of this city. We know after, you know, we have 160 people that have been murdered in this town and the Church of God in Christ was one of the largest venues in the city of St. Louis that-
Can we have some order?
Coming to our city and next week the Bishop of the Churches of God in Christ, which is 6.2 million people, will be coming to prayer, for prayer on next Friday to pray for the city of St. Louis. So come on down and, uh, see how I act when I'm not down at the Board of all.
All right, thank you.
I shall.
You shall. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 1st.
Well, since we're gonna go personal, I'm gonna top, uh, the Alderman, 'cause I know he just, uh, turned 25, but, uh, yesterday I celebrated 27 years marriage to my boyfriend.
Oh, congratulations.
And we have been together 40 years, so I just wanted, uh, give a shout out and a happy anniversary to my husband Sterling Samuel Miller.
Wait, wait a minute, you said you've been with him for 40?
I'm only 29, so let's not do the, uh, let's not do the math.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, he, 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 he got me when I was nine years old, I think.
There you go, there you go, there you go. You've known him your whole life.
We've been together 40 years, I claim my 59 years. Um, dated 13 and we've been married 27 happy years, I want to just say. It's been a privilege and when people talk about Black Lives Matters, what I tell them, Black Lives Matters is not just about don't kill people, it's about social, it's about marriage, it's about church, it's about family, it's about education. Black Lives Matters is about a lot of things and one of them is about having a long-term commitment and being married and letting the community know that there's more than what they put on TV with that mess like with, uh, uh, what is it, uh, uh, power and it's my guilty pleasures, but that is not how black people live, okay? We actually have long-term commitments and stay married, all right?
Absolutely.
I, I take pleasure in, in celebrating that.
Wow, well, thank you, thank you. Alderman from the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board, since we're being personal today, my son Ahmad, who's a seventh grader at Tower Grove Christian Academy, turned 12 years old today.
Well, congratulations to him.
I know he'll be watching 'cause he often watches these videos even when I tell him not to, but I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday.
All right, happy birthday to him. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President and Members of the Board. Uh, I first would like to thank, uh, recording artist John Legend for being here in St. Louis, uh, giving his time, energy and respect to helping us get a message out with ABC TV along with the Urban League and the Ferguson Community. Uh, I know he could have been doing something else, probably somewhere making a million dollars at a concert, but he chose to be here, so I wanted to thank him on behalf of this, uh, community. Also, I want to, um, share with you that tomorrow we will have a recycling event in Chambers Park from 10 to 3 and it, you can recycle everything, medicine, the TVs, everything. We'll have every type of recycling available to you and we'll also have a lot of information about many, many things that, uh, bring the ability for you to understand about, uh, the environmental health process. So I wanted to thank Walgreens, Urban League, Earthways, the City of St. Louis MSD and a number of other entities for making this happen and most especially, I want to thank the AKAs 'cause they did the heavy lifting on this. Um, and then today, uh, at the Urban League, we're gonna do a weatherization pro, program and we'd like to have, uh, the community attend from 4 to 7 at 3701 Randall Square and they will be giving out supplies for weatherizing your windows and things like that and telling you about the programs that are available for use for those who are, um, need some assistance in getting their places weather, their place weatherized. And I also just want to thank my community as a whole. All my neighborhood organizations have been extremely helpful in the community with community programs. Last Saturday, we had a blast in Tiffany Park, kids were excited, it was Make a Difference Day, salute, uh, students came and volunteered and so I've had an enjoyable last few weeks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I also had a special day this week on October 27, Tuesday. My wife and I was married, have been married now 25 years.
Well, congratulations.
I met her when I was 12 and she was 18.
Yeah, yeah, she's robbing the crate.
And I want to publicly thank her for putting up with me for 25 years.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I, uh, can't announce any anniversaries or birthdays, but what I can announce is that tomorrow in the Central West End is Halloween, the, I think the cities, I'll declare it the city's largest Halloween celebration. 11 o'clock is the Kids Parade, begins at McPherson and Euclid, 1 o'clock is the Dog Parade, dress up your puppies and come on down and then at 8 o'clock is the Adult Costume Contest. It's a rather adult event, so get your costumes together and come to the corner of Maryland and Euclid. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that the Alderman from the 3rd, 10th, 14th, 15th, 21st and 24th be excused for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from 26th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that the Board adjourns until Friday, November 6, 10 a.m.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from 26th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.